Okay. Anyone test? Test, test. Can you hear it?
Are we ready to get started?
Yes, sir.
Let's call order the Raker City Council meeting on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, six o'clock PM. And Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
All right, next, please.
Agenda item two invocation given by Daniel Ledford with Calvary Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas flags.
Please raise.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you so much for the privilege to live in America. We thank you for the freedoms we have in this place that, God, we can, we can disagree, and, Lord, we can agree to disagree, and, Lord, we can work through things, and, Lord, we find often when we work through those disagreements, we learn a lot, and we come out with a better outcome for the community. I pray you'd bless everyone here tonight as they make decisions, Lord, as they're looking to things in the future. I pray that your will will be done, and, Lord, that most of all, when we're finished, that we've done what was best for the community. I pray you'd bless each one of the councilmen and their mayor, Lord, as they do their jobs, and, Lord, protect them, and may your will be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, Texas, Texas, one state, one indivisible.
Okay, just for the, uh, just for our council, um, there's a request to move agenda item six F to before six A. Any objection from council?
Uh, can we keep six, uh, F and E together, please?
What's on? Six F and?
Uh, and six E to do the legislative, the program first, first, do E first, then F.
I'm sorry, I, you want to move them both up?
Huh?
You want to move them both up?
Uh, yes, it, we can keep them together.
No, they're not together, but one?
No, I know, but, but next to each other's.
Okay, that's fine.
Sequential.
Six F and six D, okay. E marked, realize six F is no action, six D is action, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So for clarification, we're gonna do six F and then six E?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I was hoping we'd do E first.
What's that?
I was hoping we'd go ahead and do E first, the legislative priorities first.
No, we're gonna sixty, we're gonna do?
Six E first.
Six F first. I'm sorry, six F and six D, you're right, six F first and six D.
E?
Yeah.
No, I'd?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'd asked for E to go first.
No, I, I, you're, you're right, Mark. Six F and six C, sorry about that, that's my bad. F first and E.
Okay.
No, I think I said E first and then F.
I'll do F first and E. Okay, thank you.
I wasn't what I asked, but, okay.
All right, thank you. Next, um?
For the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, for the record, it was I that asked, um, the other day that six F be moved to the very first item.
Yes.
So I just, if we're talking about moving things around, I just wanted the record that it was me that was supposed to be.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, next, please, Figgy.
Next is agenda item three A, recognize individuals for their past service on a board, uh, commission or committee. And so this is the time that we just give thanks for, uh, the service of, uh, individuals that are no longer serving on our boards or commissions that served through July of two thousand twenty-four. I don't believe any of them are present tonight, but we are gonna read their names aloud. If they are, then they will receive a certificate of, uh, recognition.
Okay.
Um, Lindsay Sign was on the Parks Board, if you were present, if you would step forward. Um, Victoria Egbert served on the Fate Municipal Development District. Steve Dan served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Erin Jackson served on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Okay, and so they will receive their certificates of recognition in there.
Okay.
All right, next, please.
Agenda item three B, uh, recognize individuals that were appointed to serve on a board or a commission in two thousand twenty-four. We have several that will be present for this, um, and they will receive a Fate lapel pin. So again, we're thankful for individuals that serve on a board or commission, uh, sharing their time, ideas, perspectives to the benefit of the community. The following individuals were appointed in July twenty twenty-four to serve on a board or commission and will receive the Fate lapel pin. Uh, for PNZ, Carrie Y. Mochley, please step forward. And if you'll just hang out up here, then we'll take a group picture with the whole council. Autumn Lipinski, Planning and Zoning Commission. Ashley McDaniel, Planning and Zoning Commission. Cheyana Tellez, MDD. Todd Crabtree, MDD. Bob Chambers, MDD. And Erin Penny, MDD. And for the folks at home, MDD is Municipal Development District. For the Parks Board, we have Michelle Dominique.
Nope.
Tiffany King, Parks Board. Ryan Strobel, Parks Board. Barry Brothman, Parks Board. Greg Rayawolf, Parks Board. And then for the zoning board of adjustment, we have Logan Wallace, Rick Donaldson, and Michael Ruby. I don't believe any of those, oh, Michael is here. Great. Good to see you. Again, we just wanna thank everybody for their service. We couldn't, um, do what we do here without volunteers such as yourself. So thank you so much.
All right, one, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, next, please.
Next is agenda item three C, Leadership Rockwall Class Introduction.
Well, welcome.
Oh, I, sorry, I have a presentation. It's very brief. Good evening, council. My name is Shelby Stouffer. I'm the Public Engagement Coordinator, and I am excited to give a quick introduction and kind of update on the class of two thousand twenty-five Leadership Rockwall. So I am excited to recognize all of my fellow class attendees if they would stand up for just a moment. Surprise. So we are the two thousand twenty-five class. Everybody says they're the best class ever. We're not really sure if we are yet or not, but we do know that we're the craziest class ever, and we've heard that we're the wildest class ever, so.
I'll let you have that one.
We'll take it. What is Leadership Rockwall? Leadership Rockwall is an approximate nine month, community-focused program in Rockwall County. Every month, we meet for a full day of immersion in different topics, um, whether it's education, local government, uh, business, whatever. Uh, and we get to meet with, uh, business members in the community, speakers, we get to have hands-on experiences, and then we get to tour different areas of the county and the community, um, and ultimately, it's about building relationships and networking. Every year, the class is expected to choose a program, uh, or a project within our community that identifies kind of an underserved area. This year, our final presentation is on December third to choose which project we're gonna move forward with, and we're very excited. We have two really great options. I think both can really serve our community in different ways. Um, you notice that I think most of the classes here, I believe we have twenty-three leaders from Rockwall County this year, which is, um, my understanding is that's the largest class they've had so far. So I'm very excited to be a part of it. I'm excited to be here tonight, just kind of introduce my team, uh, open up the floor for any questions, and then for those that are interested about Leadership Rockwall, you can scan the QR codes to visit the website, or if you wanna see what project we end up doing and learn more about us, you can follow us along on Facebook, um, and we'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Mark, Abby, Ellen.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three is the best class.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna give you that, that, that option.
Just wanna say, just, just saying.
Scott?
Maybe for the time.
Now, my class was the best, by the way. Okay. Mark Harper, Cody. Hey, guy, thank you guys so much for what y'all do for the community. I've been to the program. It's really great. Um, you guys have, will have a great project, I'm sure, to help the community down, and, uh, last year, Alan's class did the community center for us, which was wonderful, and it's a great thing you do, you do for us. We're kind of special that way, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. And you staying up there? Next, please.
Agenda item three D, Quarterly Report on Public Communications.
All right. Okay, so it's me again. It's just a brief update on our communications, uh, what we're kind of doing, what we're incorporating this quarter, and what we hope to continue to incorporate, uh, incorporate over the next quarter. So again, our public engagement plan is four key pieces. It's to tell our own story. It's to establish a centralized approach through our communications. It's to focus on building trust and relationships in our community, and it's to focus on proactive versus reactive communications that, uh, people kind of hear through different ways, um, just making sure that we're kind of the leaders in our story. How do we do that? We focus our efforts on our website. We focus on our social media.
How do we do that? We focus our efforts on our website. We focus on our social media and some resident apps, including My Water Advisor. Um, some new pieces of communication that we have introduced this quarter was a resident newsletter. It goes out every month around the first. It is the Focus on Fate update. Um, you can learn about, well, we'll get into that, getting ahead of myself. Um, and then another thing we're excited to begin to softly roll out is a new citywide texting service, um, and we'll talk about both of those a little bit more, but this is how we tell our own story. On our website, we're noticing that over the last quarter, we had just under thirty-five thousand visitors to our website that are averaging about three and a half minutes per session. Um, the main things they're looking at is just our, it's hitting our landing page and kind of exploring our website, getting, uh, some information and getting used to it. A lot of it is looking at our water and utilities information, so again, our bill pay information, uh, billing questions, things like that. And then over the past quarter, we did have Celebrate Fate, so that was one of our top searched, um, webpages on through our site. Um, again, it's split pretty evenly with mobile and desktop, so as we are going through our website renovation, we are optimizing for mobile devices. Through our social media, um, I just wanted to touch on a couple of our top performing posts. Uh, we you, we leverage our Facebook page quite a bit to tell the residents in our community great news, uh, informative news, and sometimes not always great news, or they may not always feel it's great. We think it's awesome. We like development in the right way, um, and as such, these were our two top performing posts over the quarter. So the first is talking about the second part of Fate Village coming online, uh, which is the top post. You can see that it pulled, uh, pretty high metrics compared to the rest of the quarter, as well as the one just below it where we announced some of the actual businesses coming in. Again, some of the comments are positive, some of them are not as positive, but at the end of the day, we're looking for reach and engagement, and these were our top two performing posts. So we would count that as conversation about our community. Um, looking through the comments, though, quite a few of them were pretty positive. Um, again, we understand people want a variety of restaurants. We're working towards that, so we'll get there. Um, so just kind of talking about the two performing posts, so you can see, uh, the one on the left performed at almost, uh, forty thousand individual reach, and the one on the right, um, which was the business announcement, uh, got at almost thirty thousand reach. Again, you can see that both of these are higher than our general post, so again, good engagement on those. Um, we do also manage our DPS, so just touching on their post, again, one of the most, uh, popular posts or most engaged posts is gonna be our golf carts, which you guys brought to the table a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, and approved. And then just recently, I believe this past week, we had a police chase, and that one got quite a, quite a lot of attention. Again, just kind of looking, so it's definitely not as high as the city numbers, the fifty-four thirty, um, and I do apologize, this one cut off a little bit, but it was up there with, um, right around the fifty-five hundred as well. So again, just top performing post on both, uh, channels that we manage. Some trends. I wanna talk about trends just very briefly. This was a fun video that our staff did the day of Halloween. Uh, we did that Golden Girls video. Um, I wanted to touch on this simply because sometimes putting content out there isn't always gonna hit on each channel, but on Facebook, while it is, while it, uh, attracted an audience, it was lower than normal, but it outperformed some of our other content that we do on Instagram. So again, different markets, different people that we're talking to, um, so just identifying the difference in the two, uh, communication styles that we use. Focus on Fate. So this is our new newsletter that rolled out. Residents receive this every month. It's a mix of upcoming information and notable dates, as well as kind of a recap of what we've done, or, um, we'll start rolling in some of our council updates as well to this document, uh, but it goes out, it hits our residents, and it just gives us another opportunity to connect, um, and inform them about policies, um, events and things going on in our community. I did include a heat map on here. This just tells you where folks are clicking on our, uh, newsletter, and this one, because of the SE tracking that our Public Works team is working on, um, was actually pretty popular, so again, it takes them right to the websites. Residents can get all of the information that they need, um, to make sure that they're in compliance with that, and it's pretty popular, um, it was a pretty popular link for this newsletter. Podium Text Solutions. So this is our new texting service that we're rolling out. This allows our staff to have a consolidated approach to all communications, including text messages, social media, web chat, and more. Um, you're able to direct message, uh, via text with our staff. They're able to assist residents a lot quicker, and it cuts down on our, um, like, our, working through our phone tree and our call wait times. Um, one of the ways that we have used it proactively is most residents, um, have been notified in one way or the other, and if they haven't, I strongly encourage y'all to just text us so you get the info and we have your number. Um, the utility billing address change. So beginning January, our PO box will no longer exist, so all utility billing checks, things like that, need to come to our facility. So we are trying to leverage our communication channels to push that message out. Um, my understanding is that since we pushed out the message to the list that we had, we had about a forty, forty percent decrease in names of folks that hadn't otherwise received that message, so it's pretty good. So again, it's just getting information into the hands of the people. Um, one of the ways that we're seeing messages come into us quite a bit is through Facebook Messenger, so again, that consolidated approach, we get all of them through here. We're able to kind of track the conversation, what's happening, and work with, um, our residents and our community members. And then you can just see, I just prompted, um, the chat a couple of questions today. When's the next council meeting? It's today. How do I learn about what's happening? Here's some links. Follow us on social. It's a very simple, very elementary text, but you kind of get how, um, intuitive and user-friendly it can be. Um, the information to text is our city number. It's on our website. I don't have it memorized. I do apologize. Um, but you can text that number if you have any questions. We'll be happy to help you. Whoops. Building relationships. So we really leverage our communications and our trust by building relationships. One of the most notable ways was with Celebrate Fate this, uh, past quarter. We work with a lot of businesses in the community, whether they're sponsors of the event, whether they're vendors of the event, um, bringing out the community. We had a really great event this year, um, and are excited to be hosting our Christmas event here in a couple of weeks. It is Friday, December sixth, right here at City Hall. We'll be doing our Christmas tree lighting. Um, some other marketing and event communications that we've helped support was the Walk and Treat back in October, as well as all of the early voting. Um, so those are just ways we we help support other departments. Proactive communication. So again, we talked last time, um, we have a couple of hubs on our website that help give in-depth information. It's our Capital Improvement Projects Hub. It's our Active Projects Hub. We've been doing, uh, some more content on ongoing construction projects or project updates, so we did a video last week about our Pump Station Three. We do, excuse me, we do have a couple of posts up regarding some construction that's happening in Wood Creek, and then just always press releases as they come up as well. That is the conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Hey, Cody, any questions? Mr. Harper. Hey, just one question on the DPS logo, right? Michael, we discussed this before. Can we trademark that?
The DPS logo?
Yeah.
I will double-check if it's not already trademarked, but if it's not, we can look into it.
Yeah, look into that. Chief, you okay with that? I think we just gotta trademark all the city logos. Uh, I don't mind having a couple of them, but we just wanna trademark them, so.
Sure, we we've been changing them quite a bit, so as soon as it stops moving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Soon as she's happy with the logo, absolutely, then we kind of stops the other kind of conversations, right? Perfect. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
All right, next, uh, next plate, ooh.
Agenda Item Three E, Sauce and Vine.
All right, welcome. We're anxiously awaiting Sauce and Vine.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Swinger, developer with Sauce and Vine Restaurant Project, along with my business partner Ted Grebe.
Hi, you're welcome.
Uh, I wanna give you an update. This project has been a long time coming. Everyone's been patient. Uh, perseverance from my side for the funding, working through all the obstacles. Uh, we started this project pre-COVID, and, uh, it's been a long time coming after four years, so I wanna thank the council and the City of Fate for your patience in, uh, in getting us to where we are today. So purpose of tonight is to give you a project update, give you a little bit of timeline of when we think we'll be open and we can, uh, have an active downtown. Let me jump back for a second. Uh, many of your new council members and many of the new members of the City of Fate that haven't seen this yet, uh, this video is just a rendering of what it's gonna look like. There are some changes, little things, tweaks here and there, but this'll give you an idea of the, uh, of the project that's coming and we're excited about. So the designer of this restaurant is, uh, Kate Murphy, so Ted has known Kate for thirty years, something like that.
Close to it, yeah.
Uh, Kate is, uh, very renowned, uh, worldwide, actually, so she's done projects all over the world, some of her notable local, uh, restaurants, Sixty Vines in Uptown, uh, Mexican Sugar, and Kate is outstanding. Kate and Ted had the vision for this restaurant many years ago, uh, the concept, Tuscan barn structure, uh, open-air concept, and, uh, wood-fired pizzas, et cetera.
You can see the big open beams, the wood beams have all been constructed as we're going, pretty much on the inside of the restaurant. It's very similar to what is showing in the rendering, a little bit changes on the patio. Uh, but the big outside bar like that, I wanted to make it really feel inviting outside.
Yeah, we're extremely excited about this. Again, it's been a long time coming. Uh, we can jump through this and show you a little bit of where we are today. So this picture is as of two days ago, the picture on the left, those are the beam, the wood, uh, beam structure. No one is building restaurants like this, so we're excited to have something very unique, not just for, uh, Texas, but of nor, I mean, I'm not just North Texas or the area, but all of Texas, so Ted and I have done our research, and there's nothing like this around, so. The, uh, picture on the left, of course, that's the, what's done, and the picture on the right, the rendering, just a still of what it's, uh, what is to come. Uh, nice bar, open air again, live olive trees down the center. Uh, the outdoor patio, uh, we're excited about this because this has evolved, and I thank you to the city, uh, also for working through the outdoor stage, some of the additions that we have, but this is really going to be uh, emerge into the whole downtown, to the park, to what you guys have planned there, so we wanna be an extension of the park, and we want the park to be an extension of our restaurant and our patio. So we have some really exciting things coming that we'll show you, uh, on the patio as well. And this is it, so the picture on the left is site progression as we are today. Uh, on the very far right, I found that design in the UK, and I was fortunate enough to find someone in, uh, uh, Roy City that does containers, and that's our rendering of what he's going to put, and we'll have that right in that area that you see to the left over there. So we'll have live music, we'll have, uh, TVs, we have a big screen that drops down, so that whole thing will be playing the game out on the patio, and, uh, heaters, misting system, so we're gonna extend our patio through the seasons as well, so extremely excited. And phase two, so when you see the rendering, you see bocce courts on one side. I keep saying bocce courts for two, so two thousand and eighteen, right, so that ship has sailed. We're turning that into, uh, we see the opportunity and the need in the area uh, for an event center, and Ted knows because it's been the restaurant game a while here. There's fifteen to twenty people, you know, they've got some locations that can handle that, but nothing more, and so something in that, you know, fifty to seventy-five range is what we're looking at. So now we're going to, uh, on the south patio, you can see that event center location. We're gonna put that over there and have something so, you know, um, corporate dinners, uh, rehearsal dinners, et cetera. That'll be a nice addition for the community and a and a space to, uh, to rent. So our groundbreaking was in March. We started, uh, we actually started moving real dirt in April, and this is our project schedule as of this week. A little hard to see, but in summary, we keep going through our challenges of materials, things like that, but we're really hoping to get our CO, uh, and and be ready to start our training and everything by, uh, mid-February, be open by the end of February, early March, is what our timeline is. So just a little, as our, as our process goes, um, July twenty, that's your site that we're looking at, and I'm very proud to say that we were able to save those two trees right in front of the restaurant. This is the, uh, picture, uh, as of two days ago that, uh, that we took, and, uh, so we saved three trees on the whole property, Ted, I think, so.
Three, three real trees.
Yeah, three real trees. Uh, but again, when we started this project, the city was kind enough to give us out this opportunity. The project was smaller. It was about three point two-one, uh, was total investment, and now we're up to five point four-three without the event center, so our commitment to the city is, uh, you know, i- it's just as your commitment is to us, that we give them the opportunity, so we're extremely excited to bring this, uh, project. And so just a few of the menu items, and Ted, you wanna talk about what's to come with the restaurant?
Well, if you're not really familiar with the restaurant, just a, a little summary is, you know, it's, uh, Sauce and Vine. It's the Texas-style inspired Italian restaurant. Um, it will be regional dishes and things like that, but it is definitely Italian-based. Um, it's gonna be able to accommodate people that are just looking for a pizza, crap of wine, or a glass of wine, or a beverage, or it can go up and have a full-fledged dried steak, um, served, you know, dried for two people, so it can be just a casual place, go up to the bar or the patios and just relax and enjoy, or you can have a real nice, beautiful sit-down dinner with bottle service and everything that you would expect to have in a fine dining restaurant. The open, the kitchens are both open-air. We have a wood grill that's being built, custom-made in Mesquite from, uh, reputable, um, builder J and R Manufacturing. That'll be open-air with the big wood grill coming up in the flames. The pizza ovens, there's two different styles that we're using for the pizzas. That's all open deck, and that's all visible for, uh, the guests when they're coming in. Pasta's, the appetizers, bar food, so it's gonna be really a full, full, full-service restaurant.
So I, I was privy to see some of the menu items that Ted shared, so we have Hill Country Rabbit Ragout and, uh, Wild Boar Meatballs on there, so.
Okay, Mark was squinting here to see the menu, so. I mean, you wanna let.
As we see the windows and doors go away, we'll start, uh, putting some teasers out there for everybody to start seeing what we're doing.
Yeah, so by the second week of December, we should have the windows in, the building painted, we'll do some more pictures, and then we're gonna, uh, have another campaign out on social media to give the, uh, the city and an update and the citizens.
Great, perfect.
We're extremely excited, so, uh, we appreciate it, and again, without the city, uh, and all of your support, and, you know, especially Justin.
Justin.
Uh, Justin was here before, and Justin did a fantastic job in, uh, being the buffer between, uh, the anticipation that you had and us trying to find the funding to to make it happen, so I can't say enough for the work that Justin put into this, so, uh, thanks to Justin and to you all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any question from council, a quick? Seeing that question. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next, please.
Okay, next is public comment. And the first request to address the council, excuse me, is Milford Randy Long, address two-two-six-three Bryant Lane, wishes to speak on Agenda Item six F.
Hey, Randy, how you doing?
Good evening. Randy Long, two-two-six-three Bryant Lane. And as usual, I'm gonna read mine, that way I don't stray and go off target. After I heard about the Pearson meeting and saw the pictures, rather than make assumptions, I read the Texas Open Meetings Act's purpose and intent and content. It then became concerning to me on several fronts, and after seeing the agenda denied its even. First, I tried to think about why I elect people to represent me. Officials are supposed to represent my best interests, to be an advocate for me, to listen to me, to inform me, all the while maintaining the highest levels of integrity and trust, not to play political games. The Open Meetings Act even has transparency as a cornerstone of its creation and tenets. I believe another is to provide me and other involved citizens an opportunity and forum, such as tonight, for input on critical issues and decisions. This meeting seems to violate several tenets of the Act, both actual and assumed. Since it was obviously a quorum of the council in attendance, and it was not posted, there was no transparency. It is very difficult to argue that the subject of legislative priorities is not city business, since it was an agenda topic just recently, as it is tonight. Lack of published minutes also compounds the transparency issue. Since a former council person was in intent, was in attendance, one with no current direct input, why were there no other ordinary citizens invited to attend? I, for one, have a very strong opinion and interest in legislative priorities and agendas, as do others, yet we are never given the opportunity. As a matter of fact, when issues such as neighborhood integrity influenced by Austin are brought up. As a matter of fact, when issues such as neighborhood integrity influenced by Austin are brought up, they are summarily dismissed. Why were two other sitting council members, persons omitted if there is an intent to discuss legislative matters? This raises serious questions and concerns about issues vital to the city and its citizens. A mundane ribbon-cutting event is posted and transparent, yet four council members, including the mayor, are invited to an event to discuss legislative priorities. At the omission of two current members is not only contrary to the spirit and intent of the Open Meetings Act, but it flies in the face of good judgment, transparency, and trust. Omitting people from an important meeting sends a strong message from everyone involved. Please do not tell me that this was a reward for offering up a political endorsement, because then there's the issue and concern of quid pro quo. I can think of two or three ways this could have been accomplished without potential violations, casting doubt and concern, and raising serious questions. I'm sure you have rationalized and justified this, but you seem to forget that those who elect you hold you to a higher standard of conduct. Five council members were apparently invited, with four attending. Two were totally omitted, one chose not to attend. You accepting and attending show your disregard and disrespect for two of your colleagues and the council process as a whole. This appears to be a major lapse in good judgment from several different perspectives. This is not a higher standard. By the way, kudos to the councilman who took the high road and did not attend. I hope it was by intentional choice.
Hey Randy, can you wrap up?
Finally, early in my career, someone once told me to stay away from the gray area and remove all doubt and most questions. Trust and respect are fragile commodities.
Thank you, next please.
Next is Rodney Brumlow, address 102 Jeremy Drive, wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6F.
Hey Rodney Brumlow, 102 Jeremy Drive. You know, dealing with 6F, you know, last meeting, I made comment, the optics stunk. They looked bad on this. And, you know, it should have never happened. When you realize there were four council members there, somebody should have begged out of the meeting. Should have said, hey, I gotta go, we've got too many. You know, we've got the mayor there, we've got the mayor pro tem there. Somebody should have been on top of it and excused somebody or themselves. You know, I agree with Randy, you know, you guys are held to a higher standard. And, you know, you know, to call it a pizza party is a joke, you know. You know, they were talking about giving, you know, what do municipalities need to maintain their control on what happens in their city? That was the topic, my understanding. And it should have never happened. Thank you.
Thank you, next please.
Next is Patty Matledge, address 267 Callahan Drive, wishes to speak on, the Katrina meeting, so Agenda Item 6F.
Welcome Patty.
Patty Matledge, 267 Calligan Drive, Fayette, Texas, 75189. I did not plan on speaking, but I had several people ask me. So, all I'm going to do is make one simple thing that they requested. We constantly see the mayor sign his little things that he does as "Fate, Fate and for Freedom." We are now saying "Fate and Transparency."
Thank you so much.
So they, yeah, we're going to steal your slogan, but change it just a little bit. "Fate and Transparency." So they wanted me to have them acknowledged, even though they just filled out a form, a lot of them filled it out and left. But they want to stand and be acknowledged tonight that they are here, whether they filled out a form or speaking. So that was my job, was to allow them at this moment to stand, to let them know they want "Fate and Transparency."
All right, thank you.
So if you would like "Fate and Transparency," please sit.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. Next please, Vicki.
Okay. Next is Agenda, excuse me, is John Stacey, address 101 East Rust Street, wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6F.
Sorry, John, welcome.
Hey, thank you.
I was drinking my coffee, sorry.
So, Representative-elect Pearson could not be here tonight, she's in Austin. So, I'm going to read some comments here. My name is John Stacey, and I'm coming forward to speak to you guys in my official capacity as County Commissioner for Precinct Four, and under official coordination with Representative-elect Katrina Pearson. What I mean by this, to be clear and on the record, is that my comments have been vetted by Ms. Pearson or completely comments that I have written. The Agenda item before you states, and I quote, "6F, discuss, consider, and take any necessary action according to the Katrina Pearson event." Myself and State Representative-elect Pearson completely agree that it is the duty of this body to self-govern itself and to have open and honest conversations about the actions of its members, along with being responsive to the people who have elected this body to represent them. The optics of actions versus the legality of actions is always something that should be discussed openly. A team of dedicated local officials was selected by the campaign in March of this year to help communicate the concerns to ensure Ms. Pearson was adequately kept in touch with the district. The idea that Katrina Pearson did anything wrong and the invitation of certain individuals should not be alluded to in this discussion. The Texas Opens Meetings Act allows for these meetings to occur. The idea that Ms. Pearson will only meet and discuss items with this panel should also be cautioned, because I have known this woman for nearly fifteen years, and to think she is incapable of getting multiple data points, different points of view to make informed decisions on complex matter of government is frankly absurd. She is my friend, and I am proud that she has been elected to go to Austin to represent us. Anyone in this room or online that has any questions about this event, from the standpoint of State Representative-elect Katrina Pearson, should reach out to me personally or to her to address them. I don't want these comments in any way to discourage the public discourse or to enter into the discussion, which you will have tonight about the attendance and participation in this event by members of this elected body. I only want to encourage people to understand that Katrina Pearson is a very strong conservative and a person of quality personal character, and she doesn't need her name blemished to the decision or discussion here tonight. She has publicly vowed to go to work and represent the great people of District 33, and these meetings are evidence that she is keeping her campaign promises, and we should be excited to have a representative who cares enough to meet with local officials in groups and independently. I applaud the efforts of this institution to self-govern itself, to take the concerns of citizens into account. I felt that it was important to stand up for my friend, my former colleague, and Representative-elect, while she's diligently working already on our behalf. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ray, appreciate that. Thank you. Next please.
Next we have Rodney Brumlow, address 102 Jeremy Drive, wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda regarding transparency. Economic Committee and Parks Need Report every meeting.
I'm sorry, what was it again?
Well, I got so many of them in here, I got to list which one it is.
All right.
Rodney Brumlow, 102 Jeremy Drive. No, you know, here, a few months ago, I made comment, and I still think it's important, that we have, you know, in this body, some information. What's the Park Board doing? Economic Development, what are they doing? A short brief of where we're at with these different departments. You know, where are we headed? I understand the Economic Development gentleman's not in play yet, you know, but if it is, Park Board's in play. We need a short brief of what's happening with these different departments within the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next please.
Next is Joanne Yott, address 808 Horton, wishes to speak on items not on the agenda, taxes, lights, and water.
All three?
Hey, I'll be quick. Joanne Yott, 808 Horton Street, Fayette. Okay, the bond issue passed. All I can say is raising taxes on Fayette citizens. And I don't care that I, as an old person, had my taxes frozen. It still raised taxes on my neighbors, and it is not acceptable. A wise person once said, and many others have repeated it, actions have consequences when it comes to elections. We saw that in Fayette, and we saw it in the national election. Planning ahead, do we have a contingency plan, and this kind of goes with the previous speaker, for providing water for all of these new residents that we're getting? My water pressure is definitely lower than it was five years ago. Will we need another water tower? Or just the same old move, raise water bills and taxes for our residents when, oh, we don't have enough water? I think we need, definitely need a line item review, and we need to cut spending so we can go ahead with some of these contingencies that are necessary to plan for. A while ago, I pointed out that less than 10% of Texas cities the size of Fayette have a city manager and an assistant manager. And guess what? Not even six months later, we have a city manager and two assistants. A time study, I believe, is where you ought to spend some money to see what three people in management actually do for this city. And I don't feel it should include trips to Austin to find out what's going in a legislative way. We pay $70,000 a year for a lobbyist to report back to you. Use those people and save those line items. And that includes the managers, the mayor, council members, and then what are they being reimbursed for? We don't get to see that. And last but not least, activate, please consider activating the automatic green turn light at 66 and CD Bourne. I live like a block as the crow flies from the school. And I avoid that intersection during morning and afternoon if at all possible, or I turn right to go to Roy City. Because there are, there can be at least sixteen cars waiting to turn left, and it is a matter of time before someone's going to either hit a kid crossing, or a person, or another car, whatever. And you've got the light there, use it. And actually, this is last but not least. Transparency, 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 and I agree with everything Randy said. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Next please.
Rodney Brumlow, address 102 Jeremy Drive, wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda. Insubordination towards city committee members by P and Z members.
Is this your last, is your last one?
Rodney Brumlow, 102 Jeremy Drive. Last council meeting, we had a lady get up in a long tirade about, you know, corruption in City Hall. She got to crying about why, you know, Facebook, why can't I get on Facebook sites? I'm being abused, you know, I can't get on, I'm being picked on. That was Karen Kaiser. Several months ago, Autumn Lebinsky got up, the same type of deal, accusing a council member of corruption. Not a one of them come up with any evidence. These are two people that sat on our planning and zoning committee. That is wrong. They've got a First Amendment right, true, but that's, you know, you know, going against their bosses. Council members all represent, they work for the council members that they represent. You know, now, you know, she kept hollering disinformation. Well, I'll tell you what disinformation is. Here's Fayette 2025. You want to log into it? What is the super secret password for this group? I can't get on. That's the same thing she was crying and whining about. You know, it's wrong to bring it up here, the City Council, and it's wrong for somebody sitting on a committee to bring it up. They want to bring it up, have issues, come up with it to their boss. Mike Kovak's sitting there, he'll listen to them. But it's wrong to bring it up here, there's other things to do besides crying about this.
All right, thank you. Next please.
Next is Zachary Romans, address 214 McKinney Trail, wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6F.
Zachary Romans, 214 McKinney Trail.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm briefly going to talk about the Katrina event. I know very little about it, other than my wife was involved. I also know that she is a citizen of this town, and although there may be some council members who feelings I have been hurt because they weren't important enough to go, I get it. But, to bring people in here to be your mouthpieces, to bring up my wife, it needs to stop. She dedicates her time to this entire county. She's involved in a million nonprofits. She knows what's going on here, and she does it because she wants to. She wants to do it to make the place better, not because she wants to be important. Not because she wants her little freeze parking spot or her tax freeze. Now, if you guys want to talk about ethics and transparency, maybe you should look deep down inside. Both of you. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Next please.
Rodney Brumlow, address 102 Jeremy Drive, wishes to speak on.
Why don't you just stay up here?
Items not on the agenda regarding closing comments.
Yeah, I just don't want to have you follow over, so.
Rodney Brumlow, 102 Jeremy Drive. Something I'd like to see is the closing comments into the meeting. You know, some of them are very informative, some of them are just, you know, it's almost like you guys are just going through the motion. I'd like to see it where, from what you guys discussed in the meeting, that we could come up as citizens and ask questions to get a little more clarity of what was discussed in our meeting, just finishing up, instead of the, you know, routines you guys are doing. I don't think any of you seem to enjoy that little bit of a conversation. But I think citizens would get more out if we could ask questions and follow-up of what was topic that evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Next please.
Cynthia Ferris, 106 Gaines Court, wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6F.
Good evening. Cynthia Ferris, 106 Gaines Court.
Good evening, you're welcome. Thank you.
Obviously, like many others, I am going to speak on the recent event. However, I am coming at this with a slightly different perspective. I am newer to the municipal system. I have just started attending city council meetings. This is the first time I've addressed you. I saw the pictures. I agree, optics weren't good. I noticed a few council members were missing. Okay, I mean, it's optics. But what I thought further is that it's not a secret, there's an election coming up, and it's probably pretty common knowledge that is going to be highly contested. This would have been an excellent opportunity for anybody who was there to showcase your connections, your involvement with the community, to bring information back to us, those of you, or those of us that vote in the elections. There was silence. It's not the optics, it's the perception that nothing was said on this. That is my issue with it. That got me thinking about it. Did I read the Open Meeting Acts? No, I did not. I do the best I can with the time and the energy I have available. But it just seemed like something was off when we did not hear anything. I realize, you know, maybe there were posts and I missed it, but a lot of other people missed it. And transparency and communication doesn't just manage optics. It isn't a tool to get you re-elected. It develops those relationships with your fellow community members. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Next, please.
Next is Tom Ferris, address 106 Gaines Court, wishes to speak on Agenda Item 6F.
Good evening. Tom Ferris, 106 Gaines Court. As an American and a retired military member, it's very concerning to me when I hear my fellow citizens advocating about censorship, suggesting that any government entity trace people's IP addresses because one believes others are spreading alleged lies is anti-American and a violation of our constitutionally guaranteed rights. Additionally, to offer that spouses or other family members of elected officials shouldn't be allowed to voice their own opinions is ludicrous. All of this controversy stems from perceptions of a meeting that involved our city officials. I'm certainly not suggesting that any impropriety occurred. I'm simply sharing my concern that the perception of unethical behavior is hard to sway once it takes root. The council has done well with similar events in the past. I'm just curious why the same effort wasn't applied in this scenario. The advent of social media has connected us all in ways that we could have never imagined. This new technology has allowed us to share our thoughts at a moment's notice. Conversely, it has also taken away our civility toward one another. I urge everyone to not blindly trust anything on social media, regardless of your political affiliation. I welcome and look forward to your thoughts on this subject. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Okay, that's all I have that signed up to speak, but I do have several that did not wish to speak, but did want their opinion on record.
Okay.
So, first being Mike LaBord, address 209 Vernon Drive, Agenda Item 6F. I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm sorry. Cynthia Ferris also wanted to speak about a topic that's not on the agenda, that being ethics and social media.
All right, thanks.
So, from never speaking to speaking twice in one night. So recently, some public comments were made that troubled me deeply. Hopefully, they were just made kind of off the cuff, or in the heat of the moment. But any suggestion or implication to silence residents, or to restrict access to information just is inappropriate and goes against the shared values of freedom and openness. In my 30-plus years of professional experience, I have been through countless ethics and conflicts of interest trainings at the city, state, and federal levels. While I've seen regulations cover spouses, things like gifts, payments, some reporting requirements, I have never seen a regulation strip a spouse of their right to have an opinion or voice that opinion. Accountability is vital, but accountability is at an individual level. To hold an elected or appointed official responsible for somebody else's words or action is at best misguided, if not unjust. Regarding social media platforms like Facebook allow public, private, visible, and hidden You know, I'm gonna guess, yeah, there's secret groups out there. I'm gonna guess there's secret groups on both sides. And there's probably misinformation, but we also have to be careful about what we deem as misinformation. Misinformation is not something you don't agree with. And statements such as, "The city should take action," and "An IP address is easy to trace" is deeply disturbing. It brings up serious privacy and ethical issues. And you can go back and you can watch it, that was an exact quote. You know, at the end of the day, we're a community and a pretty small one. You know, we can work together, we can seek to make sure that all voices are heard, and that we act at least somewhat civilly. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
So, these are, again, did not want to speak, but wanted their thoughts on record. So, Mike LaBord, address 209 Vernon Drive, support for Agenda Item 6F. He supports full transparency about the meeting and why it wasn't reported as a potential quorum ahead of time. Monica LaBord, address 209 Vernon Drive, support for transparency. Agenda Item 6K, Katrina Pearson meeting, we need to have transparency about this meeting. Rita Dodson, address 168 Griffin Avenue, support for transparency required, no more secret comment, uh, quorums. Gary Falwell, address 708 Jamestown, support for no more secret meeting, transparency meetings. Linda Falwell, 708 Jamestown Lane, support for more transparency, no more secret meetings. Teresa Horton, address 660 Basset Hall, she is undecided about the optics of Katrina luncheon explanation. Judy Mariscola, address 312 West Black Oak Lane, she is in opposition against meeting with Katrina, Agenda Item 6F, I want transparency from- Angela Barnes, 210 Vernon Drive, support for action, Item 6F, for full transparency. Bernice Antonio Messina, I can't read, maybe Cobb's, address 122 Sleepy Hollow Drive, opposition against, I want total transparency by our FATE City Council. And last, Michael Pipkins, address 103 Sleepy Hollow Drive, support for resignation of council members who attended Katrina Pearson event with no notice of quorum. That is all.
All right, thank you. And our city attorney, I will have some questions for you tomorrow. All right, next, please.
Next, we will move to Agenda Item 5, consent agenda.
All right. Any questions, comments about the consent agenda?
Making a motion, we approve consent agenda.
Hang a second. Any questions first? All right, Alan, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Making a motion, we approve consent agenda.
I have a motion, I have a second, please?
Who seconded?
Oh, Mark Harper did, okay. Any questions? Sorry about that, Alan. Any question, comments? If not, please vote. I think you're in the meeting. Motion passes 6-2-0, with one not voting. All right, next pass. Thank you.
Okay. And so next, we'll move to Agenda Item 6F, discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding the Katrina Pearson event.
Michael, how are we doing this?
I was gonna hand it back to the council members who asked for the item.
I have a written statement, but before I get started, I do want to address some of the comments that were made. I have not asked anyone to speak for me on my behalf, ever, but especially not regarding this. I have zero problems with a former council member being at the Katrina event, so I just want to say that publicly, and I invite the former council member to reach out to me if she's heard any differently. Anyways, going forward. So, when I was first presented with this concern that the public had regarding the Katrina event that took place sometime two weeks ago, I initially dismissed it because I understood why I was not being, why I was not invited, being that I was not an elected official at the time, nor did I publicly endorse Katrina during her primary. I felt, and I still do feel, that Katrina and her team are under no obligation to invite me or anyone else to their campaign events now or in the future. I want to make it clear and put it on the record that I do not believe that Katrina violated any law by inviting local officials in her district to any of her campaign events. She is not held to our quorum laws, so it would be impossible for her to have violated them. The reason I decided to go ahead and second Mark Hatley's request after a lot of discussion with my constituents is because it became clear to me that the Texas Open Meetings Act is not something that is understood by the public. When I made the commitment to run for FATE City Council, it was something that I felt called to do because there was a feeling amongst the public that their representatives were not listening to their concerns. And so I ran on being someone that would be a communicator and a listener. I want my constituents to know that I have heard you, and that I understand your concerns. I want to say publicly that as I interpret the Texas Open Meetings Act, there was no violation of quorum laws here at this event, because the law makes an exception for a quorum of governmental body at social functions, gatherings of a quorum at a regional, state, or national convention, any kind of candidate forum, appearance, or debate meant to inform the electorate, so long as no formal action is taken and there was no discussion of city business. I also want to state that even though I am not the person who initially asked for this to be placed on the agenda tonight, I did request that I be allowed to take the lead. I want to make it clear that my words are my own, no one has influenced my opinion on this, and therefore, I am speaking for myself and myself only about my intentions. So, for me, the purpose as I see it is that by putting this on the agenda, my goal is to, one, allow the public the opportunity to hear directly from their elected officials on what was discussed at this event. I know based on a copy of an email that I was given, that was sent by Katrina's team, they plan to hold more of these forums, and have stated that Katrina is doing so to, quote, "remain fully engaged in local matters." So perhaps my colleagues can share in what capacity they are assisting Katrina in doing that by having these meetings with her. Number two, this allows everyone on the council to publicly address the questions that have been asked in private, and provides a platform for transparency, which obviously, that's hearing from all of y'all tonight, that's very important. Three, this allows our city attorney to explain in better detail and educate the public on quorum laws and the Texas Open Meetings Act. For instance, one question that I, that has been raised multiple times by my constituents is why do we have this longstanding tradition of announcing a possible quorum for ceremonial events, such as ribbon-cutting ceremonies, and also for special events sponsored by the city of FATE, such as Celebrate FATE? And in this case, no quorum notice was provided to the public, all of which meet the exceptions listed in the Texas Open Meetings Act. It is my understanding that Councilmember Mark Harper did reach out to the city prior to the event with Katrina to provide notification, in which case he was told it was unnecessary. I think the public is confused about the threshold we as a city are using to make these announcements. Lastly, I want to share a verse that convicted me personally today, as I was thinking about tonight's meeting. It comes from Proverbs 16:10. "A good leader motivates. He doesn't mislead, he doesn't exploit. God cares about honesty in the workplace. Your business is his business. Good leaders hate wrongdoing of all kinds. Sound leadership has a moral foundation. Good leaders cultivate honest, honest speech. They love advisors who tell them the truth." As somebody who is a representative of my community, I want to remind myself, and I want to remind all those that I serve with, that when we are able to discuss and debate these matters publicly and in a respectful way, it provides for a healthy city in which all of our constituents feel heard and represented. Thank you.
Mark, anything? And we'll move on.
First, I wanted to make something myself clear. Regardless of what's been said on social media by many who have been complaining about the spread of misinformation, have actually been spreading a lot of misinformation, because I want to make something abundantly clear.
Hey, hang a second. Hang a second, that's not the agenda item. I'm sorry, that's not the agenda item tonight. The agenda item that you put on the agenda is Katrina's Pearson-
I, I, this is, I'm making a point about that.
No, you're, you're talking about-
No, I'm trying, I'm trying to state that I have never stated anything on social media about Katrina's event.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That I have never stated anything, not one single word on the meeting, Katrina, or of anything, but yet, people keep saying that I have. Katrina had every right to have the, the meeting that she had. She can hold a meeting and invite whomever she wants to. I am completely, completely fine with that. I supported her, I voted for her the last two times, and she's allowed to do that. The one thing I will not let stand is people saying that I said something that I absolutely have not. I have stated nothing about a quorum, anything about that in, in public, in social media. People have reached out to me. That is why I put this on the agenda. They wanted answers. Coming up here and answering during public comment would not allow them in any way to get answers. This is the only way to get answers from the elected body, as to, they wanted to know what happened at that meeting. We're not the only group that's, that's had this brought up. McLennan Chisholm had it brought up, by two, not one, watched the whole meeting, by two. This is about transparency in government. Transparency in government is, if there is a meeting, we, I checked the registry, we've had 32 possible quorums posted on the city agenda, 32 possible ones. Those are ribbon cuttings, there was a, a meeting the other night I, that I attended, several people attended, about a meeting on the outer loop, ribbon cuttings, ground cuttings, some of the most benign things in the world that nobody would even consider probably talking about public business. And we've had 29 regular, regular council meetings. So, it's the norm to post these for the public, to let them know that possible quorums could take place. All I am asking is for the council to let people know what was discussed. Was it yes or no? Was the people's, were the people's business discussed? Was anything on tonight's agenda discussed at all at that meeting? Were any questions asked on it? We have something on our agenda item tonight that has to do with Austin legislation. Was anything on that, would, would discuss? That's all I'm doing. I've never suggested, I've asked, I've researched Government Code 551, which is the Texas Open Meetings Act. I'm familiar with it, I've read it, read it several times, went, went, rewatched the basic video that we were all given in our, in our orientations a few times. It's something that we, we were warned in that video to be very, very careful of if four council members attend anything of themselves. I believe this was probably pretty reckless, this is not Katrina Pearson's fault at all. I believe, and, and honestly, nobody was given, nobody even posted on their social media after the fact that, that, that they even attended. It almost seems like they didn't want people to know. And that's disturbing. That is lack of transparency, and transparency of government is a core principle of government, an absolute core principle. People need to know that their government is, is, is literally letting them know when the people's business is being done. And when the law dictates that, they need to be allowed to be present of that. But I want to make this abundantly clear again, for people who have stated this. I hold absolutely nothing against Katrina Pearson, I support Katrina Pearson. I'm praying that she does the job that we elected her to do. I have every, every bit of confidence in her. So, everybody who's tried to make it about that and whining about this, Mr. Romans, who was up there speaking on his wife's behalf, please reach out to me as well. I've never brought Heather's name into this. So, let's not make up things that I've said, because I've said absolutely nothing about this publicly. All I'm asking is transparency. Was anything discussed about muds, zone, local zoning, anything like that? That's all I've got.
Any more comments? Seen it?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I do want to say a couple of things, because I was at the meeting, and I want to provide a couple of points of clarification- a couple of points of clarification. I'm not going to discuss specifically what was discussed at the meeting. I will say that if anybody has any questions about what was discussed in the meeting, I would encourage you to reach out to me directly, one-on-one. Because any conversations at that meeting aren't privileged and nothing that was discussed is worth hiding. But I would disagree that this is the forum to discuss it. First off, I wanted to thank everybody that came up and spoke tonight about this. I fully understand the issue as it relates to the perception of this meeting and the concerns I consider valid and reasonable. In this case, it was confirmed before the meeting that a notice of potential quorum was not required. And I will point out that while we have had a number of quorum call, quorum announcements for items like ribbon cuttings and City of Fayette events, there have been a number of events to where there have been quorums to where no quorum was announced, typically politically related events and a number of county events as well. So there have been quorums at a number of meetings, 10 that I can think of off the top of my head, to where there was no quorum call. So I do want that notice put out there. I would encourage anybody that has concerns on this meeting to reach out to me directly and ask on this particular item. I have, after two and a half weeks of it being on social media, have had two people reach out to me directly and ask questions, and I've responded to both individuals. While I only speak for myself, and I do speak for myself, I imagine that other council members at the meetings would enjoy and encourage citizens with issues, concerns, to reach out. The second note I do want to make, I have serious concerns about the precedent of putting an item like this on the agenda sets. While transparency is important, and I am all for transparency, the concern I have with this is this has, city council meetings are for conducting the business of the city. This item and this meeting had nothing to do with the business of the city. And again, I would encourage anybody to reach out and ask questions with that. What we are discussing here is, we are strictly discussing it, and I've had the two people that I've spoke with specifically mentioned this, if this is a perception issue because of who was at the meeting and who was not invited to the meeting. Agenda items like this serve no other purpose than either an attempt to call out and embarrass members of the council or to serve some personal vendetta. Again, I'm not talking about anything that was discussed in public comments. I'm only talking about how this relates to putting it on an item in a public, in a public city council meeting. There are multiple appropriate avenues to address issues like this, including citizens making public comments, our city's code of ethics, or by filing a complaint with the DA, the Texas Ethics Commission, or the Attorney General's Office. Using council agenda items to address issues like this makes the risk of our council meetings becoming a public airing ground for personal grievances and takes away from our ability as a group to handle the day-to-day business of the city. At the end of each day, each one of us is individually responsible for the actions and what we do in public, individually, not as a group, not as a council. And we should be held individually accountable by the citizens of Fayette and by the electorate. Again, to any citizen who has any question or concern about this meeting, I encourage you to reach out to me directly. I would hope and pray that we continue to have the ability to engage as reasonable adults and have conversations about the items that we need to discuss in appropriate formats and in appropriate venues. Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Anything else?
Ms. Harper?
Yes, I'd like to add some comments as well. Again, I encourage anybody who has questions about what the meeting was, please reach out to me as well. I've had zero people reach out and even ask me a question about what was discussed. I want to just go through a list here with you. So here is, let's talk about precedents and how we've always done things in Fayette. Since I've been a councilperson, these are 10 meetings that I've asked for quorum that were necessary. One meeting, meet and greet for, at the Starwood Cafe where there was a quorum of council members that were present there as well. No council message to the city secretary? No quorum necessary. Ken Paxton, Katrina Lunch? No quorum necessary. Governor Abbott, Katrina endorsed rally meeting at the shores? No quorum necessary. Watch party for Katrina on election night? No quorum necessary. And council members were at these, I don't know that all of them had a quorum, but there were council members at each one of these. Watch, let's see. Governor Abbott slash Katrina meeting at Sideways BBQ? No quorum necessary. Runoff watch party at the shores? No quorum necessary. The GOA Silver Bullet Tour at the Nelson Fireworks Store? Katrina meet and greet? No quorum necessary. A Fourth of July Parade where we rode the float? No quorum necessary. Meet Katrina potential staff leadership, which is what this meeting was about on the, at the pizza place, again, submitted to the city secretary? No quorum necessary. It was to meet the potential leadership team for Katrina. Watch party at Southern Junction after the Katrina? No quorum necessary. So again, I've, my phone number is listed, my email address is public. Anybody's willing to reach out, I'm happy to talk to you about what I spoke about at the meeting. What I spoke about had to do a lot with my personal issues with the state. And, you know, when we talked to her one-on-one before we endorsed her to go forward, we had agenda items or items that we would like for her to take forward. Those are the items that I was speaking to her about at that meeting. So again, if you want to know what happened, please feel free to reach out. Thanks.
Alan?
Echo a lot of what was said already. The, you know, I've, I've been.
Please. Any audience, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I've known Katrina for a little over a year now, and we've talked about, you know, many things that affect House District 33, affect us all. We've talked about education and school bonds. We've talked about North Texas Water District. We've talked about text dot funding of our roads. And those are all just from, you know, my personal views, talking with her about, you know, what's most important and what do we see in Rockwall County in HD 33? And I would echo the, if anybody has any questions about what we've talked about specifically, you know, I've spoken with 15 or 20 residents about this, and they've all like, well, thank you for, for, you know, for speaking with me and clearing this up. And I just encourage everyone to reach out one-on-one with us. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, Alan. So thank you. Reach out. Nobody's reached out, asked, so I'm more happy to talk to you about it one-on-one. Mark, you had a comment?
Yes, I did. Every single, everything that, every event that they said wasn't listed on there for Katrina, the Bassett Jordan were completely open to the public, including the Starwood Cafe. Here's the advertisement that were all put on the Republican Party website. They were public. This was not public. If you walked into Luigi's, you would have been turned away. Second of all, how do we know what was being discussed? When you say only city business is on this, how do we, how did we know that? How, or Cody and I are supposed to necessarily know that, on that? You guys know that. If no city business was discussed, that's between the four of y'all. We have no idea to know that. I'm addressing concerns from people have given us. If we're not there to go do that, to be able to tell them that no city business was discussed, what are we supposed to go do? I'm addressing this because of the people that elected me had concerns, and this is their chance for a back and forth. I do not see a problem with having a back and forth for y'all to sit there and say, you know what? Nothing to see here. If nothing was mentioned that's on the, that's on the agenda, that is directly related to the city, then no problem. I have not alleged anything illegal. I have not. No, sir, I have not. You can give me that look all you want to, David. I have not alleged anything illegal. If you think I have, then name it.
All right, Mark, do you have any more else?
I wanted to say something else.
Like, we're going to wrap this up soon, but this is, okay. We have things to do tonight.
Gotcha. Scott, I just wanted to tell you, I heard you, and I just want you to know that this was certainly, for me, not a vendetta at all.
Nor with me.
And I just, I just wanted to say that I'm willing to work with anybody. It doesn't matter who it is. It doesn't matter if, you know, y'all supported me during my election. None of that matters to me. I signed up to be professional and to talk to each and every one of y'all. You know, it's no secret that my election got a little crazy and things were said. But I've been able to work with David just fine, and we've been able to have conversations and remain professional. And that may be shocking to a whole lot of people, but it's been just fine. So I don't have a problem with anybody up here. I don't have a vendetta. The only thing that I wanted to accomplish with this, other than what I stated, is I would love it if, and I understand you want to move on, David, but I would love it if the city attorney was able to kind of give some guidance and education to the public on what a quorum is and why this did not meet those requirements. Because I think that a lot of it is just the education.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind, we can make it a future agenda item. I think we have an executive session training coming out. Can we do this same time?
Sure.
Because I know last time we postponed it. We just, so we can have that training, we can educate the public, and I think it's a good idea. So we can do that.
Yeah, I just want the public to have their questions answered in regards to that.
So Jennifer, you okay with doing that and pulling together? And then think executive training, session training at the same time is going to happen so we can maybe space them out or one big one. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it.
May I add one last thing? This is not about a political vendetta, and I'm not. I kept this literally off of social media. Any one of y'all could have reached out to me and basically just said, Mark, this is what has happened here. Each one of you could have. I did reach out to one of them, and they could have told me exactly what went on there and said, you're barking up the wrong tree.
All right, any else?
And that's it. But there was no transparency. Transparency.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Agenda item 6E discussed, consider and take any necessary action regarding Resolution Number R 2024-091, adopting the legislative program, State Texas.
All right, so on this one, we took a lot of feedback from the council members. We shortened it down, made it city issues only. We really cleared it up, made it nice and concise. So if there's any questions, anybody wants to add anything, discuss anything, we're happy to walk you through. But it's really, it's really crisper than it was last time, and we took the feedback to saying yes, that we probably should do that. So we did. The session has already, well, pretty finally started, so this is important. Cody, any question on this thing? Mark?
No, I'm good. Is there anything that would include funding for state roads in the City of Fayette?
Yes, so we have one here is, the last one is to advocate for state investment on local priorities such as funding for South Bend Payne Road, downtown street, any other critical infrastructure. So infrastructure is broad enough to cover anything we want to cover.
Specifically state roads, like 551, 552? If we could add that, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's under critical infrastructure, correct.
Right. I just want to say state roads as opposed to, you know.
I think we covered, because we're trying to make it broad because during this session, things come up and get weird. So we, so long as we say critical infrastructure, I think we're covered. We'll make sure. Mr. Hatley, any comments on this? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve. Alan, you want to? Go ahead.
I was going to second.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-091. All right, Vicki, did I get that right?
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Please vote.
Just to clarify, Mayor, it's a resolution. I just want to make clear.
Resolution, you said ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution. Thank you. Sorry about that.
And it was Alan that made the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, a motion passes six to zero. Next, please.
Now we will return to Agenda Item 6A, consider and take action on ordinance number O 2024-064 canvassing the returns of a bond election held in the city on November 5th, 2024. And we received the final totals today from the Rockwall County Elections Office. For the bond was 6,737 against 4,153.
All right, any questions? If not, I'll take a motion from somebody.
Thank you for everybody who voted. 62% is pretty, is really, really good. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance.
Sixty-four.
O 2024-064.
Second. I have a motion of second. Motion passes six to zero. Next, please.
Agenda Item 6B discussed, consider and take any necessary action regarding the street replacement plan.
Oh, Mayor, would you like to call a recess? Would you like to call a reset? Would you like to call a 10-minute recess or so? Oh, no, no, that's fine.
Yeah, we can keep going.
I was just suggesting for, reset the.
We can keep going. There's a presentation?
All right.
Here comes our excellent street. Street department.
We have some folks here to help today. All right, how do I get out of this? Ah ha, here we are. All right, so exciting evening. We're here to talk. We've got a lot of business to do. Of course, this is probably one of the more long-range issues, but it's really important, I think, that we tackle it. So we're going to talk about how would we replace the streets in the city? So this is something that you don't really see a lot of, a lot of folks talk about maintenance, which we're going to talk about. But this is really also about, this is really about changing the, about replacing the streets. So I'm having some technical issues with my clicker.
Okay, back.
Changing magazines.
Is, are you doing this, Michael?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's not working. Try again? All right. Excellent. All right, so I just wanted to start with some special thanks. Berlin Wirtzberger was our intern over the summer, also Riley Wicker, Hosway, right here in the front row with our Politeworks Department, Scott, Politeworks Director, Robbie Highfield, who's a planner, GIS Tech as well, and then Ryan Wells, our planning director. I saw him around here somewhere. He's around here. And then Misty Christian is our city engineer. She's sitting right here in the front with the, with the nice hair. All right. Talk about, this is, we want to show a difference between corporations and cities. So this is kind of some fun. You can see the color codes that we included here of the different types of industries. This is, this is a slide that Omar and I talked a little bit about. Let me also mention Omar in the front row here, right next to Ryan. So Omar did a lot of the. Oh, say again? AT&amp;T?
I'm just joking because they pay my pension. I just don't want to disappear.
So this is their biggest companies by decade. So we thought this is kind of interesting, and you can see the types of industry and the names of the companies as we move through time. So we just wanted to reinforce the concept of, you know, businesses kind of come and go, they ebb and flow, even the types of businesses. But cities, we've been around since 1900. Our city was first incorporated, and should the Lord Terry, we'll be here until we, as long as we need to be. So we had some fun with AI. You got to have some fun with AI in presentations, though. So I wanted to do a little quick little exercise of the infinite game. You don't like the Blue Jays? He kind of, he kind of looks like Tyler Sagan.
No hockey.
Which is what I really love in Texas now.
Come on, Michael.
I know, no. I was going to use hockey, but we use too many hockey illustrations, so.
It would have been better if you used a picture of Rufenno Door punching Jose Batista from the Blue Jays. All right.
All right, so part of this, I was going to ask, like, what's your, what's your favorite sport and then kind of just tailor it to the sport? But I just decided to go, we'll use baseball. Because it's been, Simon Sinek talked about this kind of stuff, the infinite game, and then various other people that talk about cities wrote about how you can apply this to, so I just wanted to do a quick application. So, so this is kind of like what we talked about with the, with the amount of time that we've been a city. This is, how would you, so how would, you know, a baseball game goes, what, three hours? Nine innings? Something like that? Two and a half?
Two now, yeah.
Two and a half hours? It seems longer. But what if you had to play a baseball game for, instead of nine innings, you had to pay for 90 innings? Or you had to play for 900 innings? Or 9,000 innings, 90,000? You get the point. How would you, how would you play the game compared to a game that you only spent two and a half hours playing? At some point, it's not about winning the game, it's about being able to keep playing. So as we're cities, you know, applying this to cities in our street program, just the ability to keep going and keep the city moving and maintain, that is kind of our objective. It is nice to win, and we are winning right now. We've got record growth in sales tax. We've got our property taxes outpacing our population. All sorts of good things are happening. We're up and coming. We got new stuff on the highway. We got. we got new cool residential stuff coming, and that's here. But we just got to get ready for the future. So kind of what's the problem? So we've got road infrastructure approaching failure, not in the short term, but it's coming. And due to environmental factors, rapid growth, aging materials, we've got to develop a sustainable, long-term plan to address our road maintenance and replacement, while ensuring fiscal responsibility. So of course, what's a failed road? One that's got significant deterioration, so it doesn't, no longer meet safety, functionality, or aesthetic standards. And we've, we could have put a whole lot of into this, but we just wanted to kind of throw it together as much as we can of the high points. So you can kind of see a picture, it's holding on, this is one of the roads in downtown. It's been asphalt. We've kind of continually overlaid it. Sometimes we'll do a mill and overlay, but we kind of keep it going. You can even see some cracked seal there. And then, of course, the shiny and new, or virtually new, the five-year, you see the brand-new road on the, on the right. So this is an actual road, or actual road segments. This is one of your all streets that you all live on, just to have some fun. One of you lives, one of y'all lives in the street, we didn't name it. But we'll see if you figure out which street it is later. But we just wanted to kind of show you exactly what we're, how we did this. So reconstruction costs, we, we talked to the city engineer. We actually agonized over this number for probably six to eight weeks, just to make sure we had it right, going back and forth, going with the city, talking with the city engineer, looking at bids, looking at the difference between greenfield construction and road, and new, new, new construction and reconstruction, which is a whole nother, a whole nother ballgame. And then we used the twelve-foot lane mile, which is kind of our standard road mile, road lane width. And so you can see the different lengths, but essentially you take the multiplication efforts and the length times the number of lanes, the rough promotion cost. So this particular street, you can see the different segments that were, that were put together and how much that costs. So what we did is we took every, every subdivision in the city, and we analyzed them for how old they were, when they were dedicated to us, we fast-forward forty years to the death of that street. So every road has a birth date, every road has a death date. We know when all these roads were given to us, we put them on a spreadsheet, we double-checked it, triple-checked it, and here's what we're looking at in the future, in today's dollars.
Hey, Michael, just real quick, so explain some of the data, right? So explain what a lane mile is, one.
Sure.
Two, it was one point two million like a year ago, now it's four point two. That's a big jump, so you can kind of explain how we got there.
Sure, sure.
And I think so people can understand what a lane mile really is. It's, that way we know it's really, you have to do two lanes, you have to do both back and forth, so.
And sometimes we'll, in our terminology, we'll say, so we'll say lane mile. So a lane mile is one lane wide times a mile. In some sections, in this particular case in the box, we actually, we actually just take the word lane out there. We have a hundred and three miles of roadway, which is not a lot.
And then for.
We're pretty compact.
To do a road, you have to do both sides, right? So it's four point two times two, right?
So, right, so four point two, so if you have to take a whole road, if you did, if you did a mile in reconstruction. So we've seen, pre-pandemic, we used to use, some of y'all remember, some of y'all were planning commissioners, and we talked about this a long time ago, which is a lot of fun, is that we were using a one million a lane mile, then we were kind of looking at about one and a half per lane mile. Then here comes the pandemic, we're up to two million dollars per lane mile. And some of the recent bids that we've got, Omar, what are some of the, can you write a, read some of the, come, come to the microphone for a second. And let's talk about kind of the math of how did we get the lane mile? Let's, let's start with some of the roads on, on that one part, like North Ben Payne and Wood Creek Boulevard.
Okay.
Just the, just the cost per mile.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this first road that we have here is North Ben Payne. And to give you a big picture of the equation here, so we took our, for the sake of our calculation.
Are we supposed to be seeing a road somewhere, a map, or are we?
Oh, no, no, we're just talking about, just go to the, just tell them the cost per lane mile for North Ben Payne.
Okay. Skip the method. For North Ben Payne, two, two point seven million, and.
Per lane mile?
Per lane mile. Wood Creek Boulevard, three point four million per lane mile. And Gettysburg Boulevard, the extension, the math on that is four point nine million.
So these are recent, these are recent contracts, y'all have awarded them either to developer partnership or we're building them directly. And so that is how we arrived at that number, talking with the city engineer. It's about eight hundred, eight hundred dollars per linear foot. So when you take eight hundred dollars per linear foot, and you, for a twelve-foot lane, then you just, you do the math. And so we have this, we have the spreadsheet that we put together, and it's got all the different development. As, as the city is accepting those roads from the developers, they, they appear, we fast-forward forty years. And then you can see, we wanted to see when that would kind of come, because we were a little bit worried, like, there's this big bubble at some point coming. So if you start at the bottom, twenty thirty-five is kind of when our problems kind of start, but it's not that bad. It's only, then these are all today's dollars. It's only, you know, six, seven million dollars. Twenty thirty-nine, thirteen million, then back down to seven. But then here we go, here we go into the twenty forties, where we started to get into significant costs, thirty millions. Twenty forty-five is a big one, sixty-seven million, and so forth. You can kind of see, when we've had our growth peaks, whenever we had that growth peak, we get all these roads completed, that's when these costs start to hit. So lots, lots to think about. It's about, it's about nine hundred and seventy-three million dollars, almost a billion dollars. So road maintenance, this is probably one of the most significant things that you can do to.
Hey, Michael, can you back up a second? This just makes your pin in context, right? So I think it's, a year ago, this was half or less than half, right? We're using one point two million per lane mile. If you do that calculation, it'll be a lot less than this right now.
Sure, if we use two.
So the question is.
Oh, let's talk, I'm sorry, go ahead. We want to talk about reconstruction.
Yeah, no, that's next, but just for context purposes, right? I think it's understand that, in a year and a half, our costs have gone up a lot, right? The controller, controller of Texas is saying that the construction costs have increased forty-three percent year-over-year, has not gone down. We're not seeing, even though inflation's set to three point four, two point nine percent, three point four percent for residential, the construction costs have increased forty-three percent year-over-year, therefore, is that what we're seeing? We're seeing construction costs still staying high? So this, if that corrects itself, will this go back down again?
We're, we're hoping, we got some bad, I wouldn't say bad bids, we got some high bids during the recovery. And then, of course, we were hoping that those would kind of settle down a little bit. We really haven't seen that. So our home price has doubled, which is cool. If you have, if you own a house, your house value's doubled. But then construction costs is, are higher than that. So you can see from some of the, we got a, it seems like almost two point seven million per mile. That was almost like a deal for North Ben Payne. So yeah, so to put this in context, it's one of these, one of these, like, so twenty forty-one, thirty-four million dollars, that's, that's more than the entire general fund of the city. So it's more than we spend on everything, police, fire, every, all, every, every service, parks, et cetera, all of our maintenance, all of our capital, almost.
So these, the market corrects itself, with, let's hope it does. These numbers can go down, right?
Sure, yeah, yeah, if the construction. Right, these are today's numbers, based on today's. Also, let's, and Misty's here, if we need to talk to her, but road reconstruction is different from greenfield. So greenfield, there's nobody in the way, you don't have to do traffic control, there's nothing to demolish and haul away. And so greenfield is a lot easier to do. So Wood Creek Boulevard, fairly easy. North Ben Payne, a little bit more painful, but we closed it, which helped us not have to do traffic control, but, you know, aggravated citizens. So anyway, as we, as we progress through this, just kind of see, we've got some big numbers.
So a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The two point seven is reconstruction, or is that new construction?
That actually is a, three lanes of new stuff and one lane that we're reconstructing. So that we had a lane in there, we're.
I, I don't think I asked a question right. You said it was two point seven million dollars a lane mile.
Correct.
Is that for new construction or reconstruction?
That's a combination. Well, North Ben Payne is a combination. We're putting it, we're taking out, we're reconstructing some lanes and we're adding some lanes.
Because last year it was one point eight. This year it's two point, what'd you say again? I wrote it down.
You say last year it was one point eight million?
Last year, you told us it was one point eight.
Well, one point two, one point eight, it's gone.
Are you talking, are you talking about the cost per lane mile for reconstruction?
I'm talking about the cost of building a road was one point eight.
Correct.
So is it building a new road is now two point seven, another million dollars?
Well, that's what we paid.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an actual project, yeah. So we're hoping that these numbers start to settle down a bit, but there's no indication that they, that they may. So we've tried to freeze frame where we are today, use exact, you know, using existing numbers. City engineer can talk a little bit more about reconstruction, and we've got our team here to talk, if we want to talk about kind of methodology, but they're big numbers. The good news is they're not starting for a while. Once they start, we just want to start coming together with a plan of how we're going to do this. Maintenance, so the biggest thing that we can do is what you're, what you're doing is maintenance. And you can see our road maintenance going up every year, which is great, as our road system's gone up, we've gone up. And so over the last ten years, we've actually employed a number of strategies to keep this down, because we know this is coming. So we know this is coming, we've been using things like encouraging the use of the state text dot roads. So you don't see us building a whole lot of thoroughfares, we get complaints from our citizens, hey, it's hard to move around town, but at the same time, we're not building a lot of roads that we have to replace. We've used impact fees to put in those roads, we've used impact fees to go in and add lane miles. So that's a tactic, you can only use them for new roads or new capacity. So that's tricky, but you can't use them for replacement, but we've used impact fees. We've reimbursed developers to build roads on the list. We've done fiscal reviews of proposed developments, which is a big one, to make sure that the new stuff we're building is penciling and doing well. You'll see a report, I think, from planning coming up on how we're doing on that in the last three years. And the city's comprehensive plan, kind of tying back to the fiscal reviews, the city's comprehensive plan was designed on a fiscal model to make the city function in the long run. And we actually have capital replacement funds, not in our general fund, but we do have them in our water and sewer funds, which should help. All sorts of ideas for getting things ready, but essentially establishing capital reserves and preparing for debt issuance is going to be the big ones. We've got all sorts of different, that you can see in the plan that was attached in the, in the packet. We have things like street fees, saving the surplus, if we have a big surplus, trying to put that into a fund and invest that for the future. We could lease different assets that we have. We can issue tax notes, which don't require voter approval, if we think we're going to have issues with voter approval, but we still have to do our streets job. Special assessment districts, these would not be popular, but they're possible. Nobody wants to start a Pid, once you've already retired a Pid, or once, you know, you've already got a MUD, and the MUD is dead, finally, who wants to start another one, right? Or who wants to start a Pid? Nobody really wants to do that. We could do assessments, like the old timers used to do. Some states do that pretty merciless, because people just don't have the cash to be able to pay the taxes. Even, we even threw some wacky ideas, like have a deal with NTTA, and we just put a little toll tag sticker on our car, and you go down, Ben Payne costs twenty bucks, or whatever it costs, you know? I hope it wouldn't be that much. But you get the point, like, you could have, you were starting to come up with all sorts of different things. Water and sewer mains, so this is probably the biggest strategy, the most effective, is because we're saving water, because we've got water and sewer lines under these roads, when the road needs replacement, you replace everything. So your road makes, let's say the road makes it forty years, that means that lot, that water line is forty years old, the sewer line is forty years old, the stormwater line's forty years old. So when we go in, we coordinate with all the telecom folks and the gas company, and everybody goes in, and everybody does everything new. So that's, we can bring water and sewer revenues to the party, which is major. So that could caught, that could caught half our costs potentially, if we could tap those. So you've got capital funds being saved in water and sewer, we can do water and sewer bonds, that can help spread that, that goes on the utility side of the house, not the general fund. So we can knock that number in half just by doing that. Tax increment financing, we got to be really careful with that. It's not the greatest tool. If you've had one, you know what I'm talking about. And then, of course, impact fees, we talked about, we talked about that. And then, of course, we can continue to kind of work with the comprehensive plan. We, we've talked about this sort of thing. Fiscal analysis, keep doing it on our new, our new approaches. Anybody who comes in, we look at that. Education, talk a little bit more with the community. This, of course, is a major subject, we could spend some extra time on it as we go along. Infill is the biggest bang for our buck, as far as development, trying to find space in the city and kind of thicken it up with tax base. Things like accessory dwelling units, et cetera, et cetera. Building mixed use, there is a report by the city of Dallas that they just made that, what they have mixed use, so they have vertical mixed use that makes up one percent of their, of their tax base, or one percent of their area, but it accompl, it encompasses forty percent of their tax base. So just amazing, amazing returns. Of course, we don't have any office towers with restaurants and so forth, but we do have some mixed use. Keep going on that. Smarter road design, road diet, so just because we have a twenty-seven-foot road doesn't mean we have to go back with a twenty-seven-foot road, we can go back with maybe a twenty-five-foot road or something a little bit. We can come up with different, different uses of technology. We're always looking for ways to, to look at that, we've got different folks that we're contacting. We're looking at things like people want to do different things, like the concrete overlays, which some cities experimented with, didn't go well. But the technology's going to keep kind of pushing. Building missing, kind of the missing middle housing, so kind of not, you know, you've got your single family, and you've got your big mixed use. A lot of people can't afford to live in the mixed use, because you see some of the rents on those places. And maybe in the future, the single family's going to keep getting more and more expensive. You can't, maybe at some point, you can't afford to live in those, but in the middle, you have everything else. You have duplex all the way to kind of the fourplex stuff that you see on Fain Payne that's just going in. And then, of course, we probably have to plan for some tax increases. It's not uncommon for cities, once they enter these cycles, to have a double your tax rate. So fortunately, our tax rate's only twenty-five cents, so fifty cents, it's not a bad tax rate going forward. It may be more than that, but if we execute our plan, hopefully it will be about that or less. So the challenges ahead, of course, planning for the road maintenance and the replacement of the streets, and then looking at funding strategies for long-term infrastructure. Some proactive measures that we've got, we've got a maintenance fund that's active and growing. We're going to be talking about putting in some surplus funds from the prior fiscal year. We had a great fiscal year, talking about pre-funding the Fund Two Oh One, which is our road maintenance fund. And so we'll bring that to y'all in a few week, in a few weeks here. That'll also help keep doing that, keep doing the maintenance. Public Works is doing a great job with that. We also have some really neat asset management software, so we have Cartograph, which is a national tool that a lot of cities around the country use. There's also a scenario tool combining with robotics. So robotics, we drive, we drive the city, and it's got a, instead of spending all that money on those ground-penetrating radars, those things that look like armored cars, they run around the city, we don't do that anymore. We have a cell phone with the brains of a public works director in it. And that's the, the cover that you saw in the package with the red and green map. That's the road conditions as of today. So that, that map tells us how we're doing as far as the condition of our roadways. We combine that with the, some of the scenario tools that we just upgraded to in Cartograph. And we're hoping that it's going to tell us what your maintenance budget needs to be next year. So right now, we're just kind of gradually increasing our maintenance budget, but we don't necessarily know what that number should be. So that software is going to be able to say, okay, you're, you're at, you know, you're at one and a half million on your contracts, you're at another half million with your, with your in-house staff, you're at two million, great. But what if we need to be at four million? Like, how do we get to four million and still maintain it? Because we need to get our design life out of these roads, or else they're going to actually fail faster. All right, and so the next steps is really to, to talk about this, and at some point, start creating a long-term funding strategy, so that when these roads start going, we start seeing those first single-digit million years arriving in the next decade, that we'll have a chance to start eating those, eating those away. So there's a lot.
Michael, just, just to wrap it up, I mean, just kind of put a bow, and then I have a question for you. So what we're saying and what we've been doing is, the better maintained roads we have, the less long-term cost replacement of roads we're going to have, correct? So we do the road survey, we have all green, basically, that's much improved from ten years ago, which we didn't have that, right? And now we're trying to invest in the maintenance, so we can keep the future liabilities lower. Correct, okay. And then what you presented, counsel, was maybe too many, but seven or eight options, some of those options will be taken away by the state this session. What has to fight those battles, but I think that's what you want now. Tonight, what do you want from us tonight?
Yeah, no, tonight is just because this is such a big topic, no one really talks about this. I've seen other cities, in fact, I read a plan just today, they had, it was a hundred and seventy-two page plan. I didn't read the whole thing, I just skimmed it. But they talked, they didn't, they didn't talk anything about actual road replacement. They just kind of said, hey, we're not doing any maintenance, we need, we got to get to this number of maintenance per year, and here's some different ways.
And the other, and the other, I think, message I get out of this and I'll let council have questions is fiscal responsible government does long-term planning. That's how you be fiscal responsible, right? We want to do fiscal responsible, whereas we want to do the right thing to citizens long-term. The way you do that, you plan for, right? You start with corporations, right? And I do know corporations do not cut their way to success. Just doesn't happen. Cities cannot cut their way to success either because one afternoon, your roads don't work. Or your water pressure is down, things like that. So I think we're trying to say, look, we have a long-term problem coming up. We're being proactive like a good serving government should be and how we do business. And we're trying to figure that out at the lowest cost possible and maintenance is part of that. Okay. Mark, Allen, any questions?
No question.
Alan?
What percentage of our roads is less than 10 years old? Ballpark.
What do you think, Omar? Could you ballpark that one?
I guess my point is that we had a whole bunch of roads built all at once, whether it's Edgewater, Williamsburg, I'm sorry? All the Wood Creek, those are all going to start failing at the same time because they're all built at the same time. And I think that the more we can continue to maintain these and look for pressure points on these roads, the better off. My other, other comment would be you gave a whole lot of funding options for fixing our problems. Some of them are, we're could entertain. The other ones are like, we don't touch, no, hard pass on a lot of those. I would like to see, I guess, a better list of like, these are the ones that we're interested in discussing. And then these are the ones that are like, you know, last, last chance, last ditch effort. We have to do something. Otherwise, we're going to really fail. You know, I, you know, the, the, the overall tax increase would be at far bottom for me, you know? Impact fees, developer sponsored, things like that would be more at the top of my list. I think that if we could get that list a little bit more structured as far as these are the options that we are in favor of versus the ones that we're like, no.
We're planning to, sure, this, this is kind of the introduction almost. It's like part one. And then part two is a real like coming back with an actual like, this is how we would actually do it. In fact, one thing I didn't mention that we'll have in our, in our next version that we have already talked about is one of the assumptions why the number is so high is it, it anticipates every asphalt road in the city turning into a concrete road, kind of meeting that concrete road standard. So there, there may be a point where you can kind of keep those, keep those asphalt roads going. We last saw this with the Mobile City discussion earlier this year. So Mobile City came to us, hey, we want to potentially roll into fate. How would that work? We ran a financial analysis. We said, doesn't really work if we replace their roads with concrete. But if we leave the mass salt asphalt, it pencils. Actually, they, they're net positive, but they have to stay asphalt. So there may be situations where we do redevelopment in certain places and we decide to go to asphalt. But there also may be some places that if they still stay more rural, maybe they stay, they stay asphalt, you know, they stay asphalt there. So.
And now can we add to your request? I think we, I agree with them through four things. But also we got to put what's the taste, what this day is going to take away from us. Because the impact fees are under great pressure, right? So I just think I like your list. We just add, hey, this is under attack by the phone column would be safe from state, not.
These options are being attacked. I get, yeah.
Right. If we lose zoning altogether, we have a lot of high density housing and they will have more impact. I'm not saying about wrong. I'm just saying that's the consequence. So you know, Mike, can we add that to that?
And I'm glad our two, you know, Commissioner elect and Commissioner Stacy are here to help, you know, help us with our funding issues. Right? Right, guys?
Scotty, any, any questions?
No, I, I, I think for more for the public benefit than anything. It, it's a good conversation to be having now. You know, when you look at the graph of the timeline of anticipated life cycles of roads, we really don't hit a big number for 10, 11 years, the first big number. And then it's another 15 years after that before it really starts slapping us in the face. But, but the issue is the things that we're doing now that can better serve the city going forward. Because what I don't want to see us leave behind is a legacy of what some of the other cities in North Texas do. A neighboring, not, a not adjacent lakeside city who has a habit of just, when they need to replace roads, all they're doing is treating it like a school district bond. They're rolling debt on top of debt, on top of debt. And are using that to increase taxes to replace roads when, when i- if we set things up now, we can make decisions for future councils. Maybe not easy, but if we can make it a little easier for them. So I appreciate having the conversation now. And I hope it's a conversation we'll have at least once a year.
Mr. Harper?
Yep, I echo my colleagues' comments as well. And thank you, Michael, for explaining this again. That, that's a pretty shocking amount of money that it's gone up in just a year. So I can't imagine where we're going to be next year. So staying on top of these things is very important.
Cody, any comments?
No comments. I agree with everything that y'all said.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Michael, so you get your homework assignment narrowed down to three.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to refine the plan. And we'll get, we'll possibly get some input from other, other, other cities or maybe academia. We've talked about talking to the colleges and so forth and.
Perfect.
And then come back with, we'll pair Raju. The scary part is we'll pair Raju. We'll start actually diving into the, the numbers.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, Ms. Vicki, next please.
Next will be Agenda Item 6C, discuss, consider and give staff direction regarding electioneering campaign signage at city facilities used as vote centers.
And who says this?
This is me.
Okay. I knew that, but I was tired. Just ask.
So as you know, in the staff summary, we indicated that we did receive some complaints during the November election about campaign signs kind of blocking the view and, and the potential hazard that that is entails. And so you are allowed to establish reasonable regulations for placement of signs at City Hall if City Hall is used as a polling location. That would only be during early voting and on Election Day. So I've just put in here, I, you know, I wasn't sure if you wanted to establish some regulations. So this just seeks council input.
So let's do this. Let's do one thing at a time. Do we want to establish any kind of rules around signings outside of the city of fate? I know the county did. I believe they did one sign per candidate. I believe that's true. So Mark, Allen, you want to go down this road or not? That would be a no. Okay, Mr. Robbins?
I'm not interested in limiting the matter signs, just a line of sight for safety as the kids cross from Bobby Summers, I think.
So like maybe, maybe not allowing signs to be in the triangle of visibility. Is that correct, Ryan?
Triangle of, triangle, the triangle of visibility. And it could even be just taking a spray, can of spray paint and making lines saying nothing here because kids are going to get hit.
Got it. Scott?
I, I, I would, I would agree with that. I think, I, I don't want to do anything to take away. I mean, if somebody wants to pay for and put 100 signs around City Hall, I mean, that's, that's money the candidate chooses. But as it relates to those bigger signs, especially moving them away from the driveways would be beneficial. I'll also note that it's nice to see in the city council package, a, a sign for, a couple of signs for our commissioner-elect that's in.
Free advertisement tonight. All right, Mr. Harper?
I agree. Only limiting for safety aspects. So within the, within the line of sight.
Okay. I think. And Lauren, your signs are too big, so we're going to take care of that tonight. Okay, so Vicki, just for you get your input for direction.
We'll bring back, you know, in ordinance.
And then this is, make sure we're all clear. This is only for public property where points, which would be just City Hall and that. Where Mr. Like, I have to come to Lauren tonight. Mr. Like, these big nine, 25 by 25 foot signs are at, and that's private property, right? So, okay, perfect. Thank you. Do you have what you need?
I do. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, please.
Agenda Item 6D, discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding Resolution Number R 2024 dash 090, casting votes for candidates to serve as members of the 2025, 2026 Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Michael, you want this one?
Sure. Yes, sir. So we put together the, this is the actual vote for the, this was tabled for the last meeting and we asked the Arcad for information. And they said they did not actually have information or resumes on all their candidates. So we, we had 45 minutes or not, and we used artificial intelligence.
So we don't have to vote at all, right? We don't, we don't have to vote for anybody tonight, right?
We have, we have some votes if we want to distribute them among.
I'm sorry, I asked the question wrong. I apologize. I'm saying that we don't, we don't have to allocate 125 votes and we can just say nobody and move on, right? Or are we going to cast vote for somebody?
We, whatever you like.
Okay, that's what I'm just asking. All right. As a preference of the council.
Well, I'm still disappointed that we don't have, we didn't have a discussion about the nominations to start with. But seeing how that these are the nominations that were presented, the research that I did found, you know, John Hosen, Ho, Ho and Shelt is as good of a candidate as I can figure out. I, I feel like we should cast our votes for somebody. I don't think that we have a, you know, a very good standing to complain about the way things are done without taking part in the process. That's just my thought, though.
Just make a motion and then.
Make a motion and discuss. I'll make a motion that we nominate John Ho and Shelt for the Rockwall CAD.
Do you have a second?
A second. We cast our, we cast our votes. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the castle of us. Scotty, do you have a question or a comment?
No, no, I would probably request to amend that just, I, I don't know him personally, but I've, I've witnessed Cedric Thomas from the Rockwall PMZ and the Rockwall City Council. And I think he is reasonable and level-headed. And so I am going to make a motion to amend Councilman Robbins' motion and allocate half of our votes to John H. and the other half to Cedric Thomas.
And do I, do I have a second on the amendment? I'll second the amendment. What we're going to, okay, okay. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Mayor, real quick, I mean, I'd rather give all of our votes to one and not split them up. But, and I'm fine with the council deciding on one or the other to give all.
Yeah, let's, let's vote on the amendment and we can go from there.
The amendments, what?
Just to split between, between Tim Harley and Cedric Thomas, just one evenly.
Well, how would, how would we go about just choosing between the two? Take two nominations and we vote between the two nominations to give all the votes?
Well, right now we have a motion and a second, so we're going to have to.
Correct. I'm getting clarification from the city attorney on how to proceed.
No, that's, that's, no, you come through me. I'll go to the city attorney.
I'm sorry?
No. So we have amendment and a second. I think we have to vote that out. We don't get to go backwards. So the council says no amendment. We come back to your amendment, right? Your motion, virtual motion, right?
That, that was the clarification I was looking for.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have a motion, a member's a motion that is, I'm making sure I write it, Scott, it's split between Tim and Cedric. Cedric? Cedric evenly. I have a second. So we'll do it one at a time real quick. I think we're, Mark, yes or no?
Mayor, this will be a hand vote.
I know. I'm going to one at a time. I'm just going real quick, real call. Mark? Alan?
No.
Hang a second. Scott?
Yes. Yes.
And I'll vote, I'll vote no. So that would, motion passes four to two, right? Four to two. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, next, please. Are we done?
Well, no, we had to vote on the original motion.
I'll take a motion for the.
Oh, no, it's already been, it's already on the table.
I'm sorry, you're right.
A motion to approve the.
The minimum motion, right?
Right, that, so the amended motion passed.
The amendment is to split the votes between two people.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024 dash 090, casting equal votes between Tim Harley.
We've got the motion. I'm sorry.
But we have to put on the resolution.
I understand, but, but you're saying you're making a motion. The motion's standing on the table, but.
I'm sorry.
The amended motion is standing on the table.
No, we, we just approved the minimum motion.
We have voted, we approved the amendment to the original motion.
That's what I'm saying. Now we have to do the orders.
I understand, but you made a motion as opposed to taking a vote.
Okay. All right. Please vote and.
But to be clear, we were splitting the votes between John.
Yes.
And Cedric. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did we vote? Who didn't vote? Scott? I don't know. All right. All right, motion passes six to zero. Next, please.
Who, who gets the extra vote? It's an odd number.
It's you, Alan.
So now we will move to Agenda Item 7, Mayor, Council and City Manager Report.
All right, I'll start with Cody.
So initially I had asked David if I could make a comment about Facebook comments and he told me no. So I am just going to say in general that I'm calling for civility and for people to treat each other like they have a mama and a daddy, like they're human beings. And to be gracious to one another. Things have gotten so ugly online. And I think everyone needs to remember that everybody that's sitting up here, I believe is here to serve the public and they're doing the best that they can. And try to just treat people the way that you would want to be treated. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Yep, I just want to echo Cody's comments about social media. I think, again, the, the temperature gets high on there pretty quickly. Again, I would request that if you have questions, please reach out. I've responded to every email, every call I've ever gotten, so I, I will do that no matter what. And thanks to the city staff for putting all that numbers together for the roads because, you know, that, that's a lot. So, thank you.
All right. So just a clarification real quick. The purpose of Agenda 7 is congratulations, condolences, information, recognition, reminders. That's what we're supposed to be doing. Our community advance. So just letting you know. Scott? Any comments?
You just changed all my comments with that clarification.
I know.
No, first off, I was excited to get to, to get to canvass the election for the road bond. I know we said this, or not the DPS bond, I'm sorry. I, I know we said this last week, but it did pass overwhelmingly. I'm excited to see the work on that. I would also encourage citizens based on some of the comments and issues going on at the county level as it relates to the, the road bonds that were passed a few years ago, that I would encourage every citizen to hold the city council, city staff to the fire as it relates to building what was promised. Because we made very clear what we intend those funds to be used for and we asked the citizens what they wanted and they agreed overwhelmingly. So I would, I would hold, hold us to the fire on that. Also would encourage any citizens with any comments to feel, feel free to reach out to me directly. While my phone number is on my Facebook page, it is also 469-668-3050. Please feel free to reach out.
Alan?
The holidays are upon us and as we usual, Chief can attest, as well as our, our, the county sheriff, is that domestic violence, mental health, road rage, all of those typically spike during the, the holidays. So just watch out for each other, be neighborly, talk to each other. Both the city of fate, DPS and the Rockwall County, they all have resources that they can point people to for help. And I encourage everyone to do that. Christmas tree lighting is on the sixth. Get there early. It's usually crazy trying to get there because everyone's trying to get their kids there for the singing. So I encourage everybody to get there as early and enjoy. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hatley?
I would like to thank the DPS and for everything that they do, keeping us safe every time. I would like to echo everything that Cody said. I think it's, it's spot on. We need to talk to each other and not at each other. But in addition to what Alan said about the tree lighting, I've been informed today. Thank you, Mike, and the staff for, they're going to create a, a handicapped and seniors drop-off point so they don't have to walk quite so far. It's going to make the event more accessible to more people. Like I said, being ADD compliant or DA, I'm sorry, ADA compliant is a minimum standard. We can go above with that and hopefully more people can enjoy the tree lighting. Thank goodness. And I want to thank the city staff, Michael and them for putting that together. And I would like to encourage, like I said, us all to work together, communicate better. I'm open for anybody who ever wants to call me. My phone number is on my, my council page, my Facebook council page. Email me anything, good, bad. You got a problem with me? You don't like my hair, anything? I promise you, I will listen. I don't have a big social media footprint other than to repost news. So you're not going to see me debating people much on, on Facebook. So thank you to everybody. Thank you for everybody on the council tonight. Hopefully we can walk away with all this and, and know how everybody feels and not have hard feelings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So Chief, thank you for what you guys do for us. Congratulations on the bomb. Glad we canvassed tonight. That's great news for us. And 62%, like I said last time, is a big win for our city because a lot of bond, the state ticket failed this time actually. Mainly because they don't explain why we're doing something. We, we do a wonderful job of that. at that, and I appreciate that. Thank you for everybody who came and spoke tonight, that was great, fantastic, so thank you for being engaged, this is, it's always appreciated, and you gave me an email, had a question, I will answer you really quickly normally.